Okay, we're gonna open this session of the Planning Board meeting.
Yes.
This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on Rutland Cable Public TV, I guess they call it.
According to the signs.
Yeah, but they'll probably record it too. Anyway, start with a review of our minutes from the last meeting, December 11th.
Just have a typo, I think, on the first page. It's in the Spruce Hill paragraph. One, two, three, four, five. Lines up and it says norm, norm.
Norm period, then, norm instead of the second sentence.
Standards, norm.
Because norm's standard.
This is true.
I am.
I'll make a motion to accept, and I will like to come back to this because I have something that is printed here that we need to talk about.
Would you like to, through the chair, would you like to just hold off on the minutes or the meeting?
I made the motion.
I'll second that.
No, I made the motion to accept now.
Okay, okay.
Come back for discussion.
Come back for discussion.
Right now.
Wrap it up. Read it.
Do I have a second on that?
Sean second it.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye. Just to let you people know, I'm Spruce Hill. Julian has documentation supporting this. I would like to have that documentation brought forth.
Yes, as far as the documentation, we will be requesting that of the applicant in time for the hearing, which will be in February.
Okay.
That will be an item that we're gonna follow up with.
Very good. And then, if I'm not gonna be here in February...
Please. I would put this down, yeah. Because there was, if I remember right, the fire chief had some issues with buildings close to each other and things like that, and that was supposed to be taken care of as part of the updated plan, if I'm not mistaken.
I think, once we get to the hearing, these are items that will be for discussion.
Okay. Good night.
I could say I'm not gonna be...
Will you be remoting in for the...
No.
Okay, we all set on that? Okay, next. We are blessed with a visit from Ron Baron, from CMRPC, to discuss some upcoming projects that they have in mind for some DLT grants, DTLA grants.
Thank you, yes. Do I need to, I don't need a microphone, do I?
One right there.
All right, well, I'll just stand near it, so that way they can hear me. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time. I won't take up too much of it, because there's not really much for the board to act on right now, I just wanted to make you guys aware of some things. Right now, we are working on our district local technical assistance grants, and again, for anyone who doesn't know, I'm with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. My name's Ron Baron. We're the regional planning agency for this area. We do a lot of projects, we're working on a few of them in Rutland right now, and we're trying to get our district local technical assistance grant program rolling out. One of the things that I'm working on personally is I'm trying to get a couple of regional projects going, and I thought Rutland might be a good community to be potentially involved in that. One of them is going to be around, we're looking to do something around solar. The thing that we would like to do, we've been hearing a lot of different things from our constituent communities, about the number of applications that are coming in, and the speed that they're happening, and a lot of different things, and a lot of questions about what's driving it, what's affecting the market, and we obviously don't have a lot of answers. So what we would like to do is, we would like to start having, get some funding to do some research on our end, to try to understand the market a little bit better, understand what might be pushing into the state level, understand what might be pushing into the market level, and also have a series of regional meetings with various communities to find out what everyone's concerns are, what you're actually seeing, and try to get a nice data set that towns can use to try to get a better grip on what this particular issue. What we'll be doing is, I think we're gonna be probably not submitting it this round, but we're gonna be doing another application round in March, and if the town is interested, we would like to get a letter of support from you to see if that's something that you'd be interested in participating in. The second one is, there was a community that asked us if we could assist them with rezoning some residential parcels around a lake area, and we had, it occurred to us that there were a number of communities that have similar areas in town that had zoning issues. One of them, I thought in particular, was the area around Cool Sandy Beach in Rutland, where there's a lot of small parcels that don't really match zoning. So what we would like to do is, we'd like to get a couple of communities to work on this project, where we can find out what the specific zoning issues you have around those areas are, and do a little bit of community outreach, do a little of organization, try to come up with a model bylaw that various communities can use to try to fix that problem. Again, this is one we're gonna be looking at in March.
Love it.
Okay. So if you would be interested in working on that one, what we would do, again, is I would send it over to Dave and Norm, and then it would be something that we would ask for a letter of support for from that. And then finally, there's the continuation of the RDIC program, that we were working with them on the Rutland Heights project, and I know there's a letter of support that David has put together, and we were gonna ask the board to review and sign tonight, if you were able to. We're also doing an extension of our marijuana technical assistance program that we did last year. I know all the, a lot of the communities this one included, take advantage of that to try to write their model marijuana, to write their marijuana bylaw. So what we're doing now is, instead of working with towns to write their bylaws, what we wanna do is try to work with communities to help them get to the next stage, because we've been getting a lot of questions, with people asking, you know, now that we've got this, how, what do we do with it? How do we vet potential applicants? How do we do the process? What's the best workflow? So we wanna do something, a regional project around that. We're gonna be submitting that this, I think, this round, which the deadline for that is Friday. Because of that, I don't think I'm gonna ask you guys to try to come up with a letter of support, because obviously that'd be by the end of the meeting, so I don't wanna do that. But it will be available, I want you to know that it's available. If something comes up, there's gonna be funding for technical assistance to towns. If you guys get any applicants, you have any questions, it's gonna be available to you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to follow up on the RDIC reference that Ron made a moment ago. Just to give you a brief update, this would be for the February, for the February grant cycle, the January grant cycle, the one that's coming up?
That's gonna be the one that's coming up, this, the meeting's on the 17th.
The 17th, so this will be on the January cycle. This has to do with the meeting that the RDIC had last night. The CMRPC came out and has a DTLA grant that is in a draft form. It was discussed with the RDIC. This would involve marketing and visioning with respect to reuse of the site, the height site. So, the RDIC was unanimous in their support of this program, and moving ahead with the CMRPC. As part of that process, CMRPC was looking for a letter of support from the Planning Board and the Select Board. I drafted something. If the board would like to take a quick look at it and they get a signature tonight, that would be ideal, because of, because of the compressed timelines.
You have just one copy?
That's all I brought.
Dave, you want me to just quickly read it? It would probably be quicker than everybody looking at it.
Sure, I can read it. So, the long and the short of it, Kerry Solow made a presentation to the Rutland Development Industrial Commission last night. So I'm referencing that, the board understands that the RDIC understands that, on behalf of the, on behalf of the CMRPC, the CMRPC has a draft DTLA grant. If approved, the grant would be used for revisioning component and to develop a marketing program relative to reuses of the site. I also indicate that there would be review by the Select Board with the RDIC relative to any preferred uses of the site, such as a municipal use, and that the RDIC would be meeting with the Select Board as soon as possible, I believe this coming Monday. And then I just go on to reference what's gonna be happening in terms of timelines with the RDIC moving ahead, and that the Planning Board understands that the RDIC voted unanimously to authorize CMRPC to develop the DTLA grant. And then regarding the request for a letter of support by the board, the board recognizes the importance of redevelopment of the site and wholeheartedly supports the efforts of the CMRPC to assist the RDIC as is being proposed. So that's basically the letter, not quite verbatim, but pretty close. That's acceptable to everybody, I would request a signature by the board chair.
I'll make a motion.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye. Great, we appreciate that, thank you very much. Just David, the board chair and half of the planning board as a whole. We have actually two copies, we can get one for our file. Please.
Ron?
Thank you very much. And so I will, this is essentially what I would be asking the board for, for the other two projects. Did you want...
I have, this is the board's selectus.
Oh, it's the board's selectus.
Do you want to sign it too?
And I'll be sending that out along with the scope, probably in the next few days, for those two other projects. So that you guys can review by your own means. That one will be voted on in March, so we have a lot of time. All right, well, thank you very much. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Ron.
Good seeing you.
Yes.
Okay, just very quickly, before we get into our list of public hearings, I just wanna mention, the Planning Board has received, I guess I'm going to say, something that appears like a citizen's petition regarding our solar bylaw, and I guess there are a few things I can't say that I am 100% certain about, but. This petition is requesting a zoning change regarding our solar bylaw, which would have to happen, number one, at town meeting. I believe citizen's petitions such as this must be submitted through the town clerk to the board of selectmen, which I don't believe has been done. Among other things, one of the things I know that is required, that in any citizen's petition, the signatures on the petition must be verified by the town clerk. So...
Is that documented somewhere?
Pardon?
Okay, can you send that to us? Yeah?
Yeah, again, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna say...
So if you have to follow certain processes, I would like to see it formally documented, so we can adhere to those...
You could probably get that from the town clerk.
To the best of my knowledge, and I'm, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't pretend to be one.
Yeah, I don't wanna disregard what you just said, it's just every time I be showing up for these meetings, there's always something new and something new, so I don't wanna get to another meeting next time that we're gonna have, and you're gonna mention something additional that we have to do, so it would be good if we had that information on it.
So, Norm, so in the last meeting, said the abutters do not want the waiver granted. Norm requested a letter signed from the abutters saving this, so we brought it to Dave, Planning Board. Where's the town, town sort of, or, or in town building?
No, no, in the lower town hall, and she's there now.
Oh, in the town hall. So we just bring that document to, to some, is that the, is her name?
Anita.
Oh, Anita.
Carlson.
Okay.
And it would, they need to be addressed to selectmen, the board of selectmen.
Oh, okay. Addressed.
I am 99% sure, okay? But that's, that's as far as I can go. Like I say, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not gonna pretend to be one. But I've never, I never heard of a citizen's petition being able to be submitted directly to any other board. Particularly requires a warrant article on a town meeting warrant, and that is in the control of the selectmen.
Does it have to have a specific number of signatures, or whatever it works? We have 22.
There is, and, you have to pardon me, because I don't know, I'm a brand-new town clerk in Paxton, so I don't know, I don't have it memorized yet, but I know that it's a good percentage of your population, and I don't remember what that percentage is. I'd have to, I'd have to look it up. I don't know if it's 10 or 20, I don't know.
Okay. Are you gonna put that in the minutes and with the, with our answer, or just take our email addresses?
Should I put that in the minutes?
The clerk can tell you all the information.
Oh, it's not gonna be answered?
If you wanna be sure you're getting the right answers, you need to go to the town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
She is the holder of all of the documentation for the town. I'd like to say she's there right now until seven o'clock, so.
It's almost seven.
Oh, we can do another dial. It's night.
With that, and that's as far as we can really go with that.
Okay, so she was sent to the selectmen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then it would go on to a town meeting?
I don't know what the selectmen would decide to do from there, my, my own personal thoughts, at least after, after reading, you know, through the particular changes. At the very, very least, it would certainly have to go out for legal review, they might also decide to forward it to the Planning Board for some sort of review.
Do they, do they need one copy, 10 copies?
Of the signatures?
We don't really do. No, we don't know. We never had to have one of these before, and, you know, I know that there is a process that you can, you know, to follow, but...
And changing a bylaw does have to go through a town meeting?
Right. You know, and then there's the circuit that it has to go through, the town groups, you know.
Through process.
Just, very quickly, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag this out, but one of the things about a change to a bylaw such as this, it cannot be retroactive.
So what does that mean?
Okay, if an application for something under a zoning bylaw has been submitted, and we are acting on it, that application is subject to the current bylaw, not to anything that happens in the future.
So if the petition states that residents are seeking halt current projects that are under review?
Can't do it.
So you will proceed with your existing meetings and approvals and review of existing projects, and then you, based on the approval of the date when the bylaws are being approved, or the bylaws approved, then you can actually...
From the date that the bylaw has been changed to the future, that's where it starts. So anything prior to that date, the bylaw being accepted by the state, anything prior, can't be changed.
So if you have projects that are currently being...
Projects that are doing right now, or, yeah, under review.
Are still in process, then?
Until said time.
All those were submitted under the existing bylaw. Okay? The ballgame on those has started. You can't change the rules in the middle of the ballgame. You can't start a baseball game saying, "Three strikes and you're out," and then halfway through the game say, "No, two strikes, you're out." You can't do that.
And we would read the bylaws of the town, full to read what the bylaws are specifically for every project?
You can pull all that up off the town website, all the town bylaws, and it's all readily available. And through mass.gov, you can pretty much get anything that has to do with any law or state rule.
Tim just found the law that's in question, it's chapter 48, section 5.
It's titled Adoption or Change of Zoning Coordinates or Bylaw Procedure.
Can you repeat that?
It's chapter 48, section 5.
Forty-eight, and the letter A.
Section 45. Yeah, it's general laws, part one, title seven, chapter 48, section 5.
Okay, onward, we're already late. So we have a continuation of a public hearing for a solar project at 199 Glenwood Road.
Thank you, and happy new year to everyone. I'm happy to go as opposed direction, but we have the document taken back from Quinn. May as well just run through those, it's the, we can pick up everything point by point there, if that makes sense.
Do we have... Are you here? Seven?
Have you got a date on the, yeah, January 7?
It's January 7.
I don't have any documentation. January 7.
January 7.
13, 026.
Oh, it's 2018, I should imagine that means 2019.
Is it up under there? It was an email. Give me the email. Okay.
It says January 7, 2018, I believe that's in error. Yesterday. It says 2018, but I...
Isn't all the copy, I was...
Perfect, yeah.
Okay, it's supposed to be 19.
It's supposed to be 19, yeah. 1-7, correct? Yes. Perfect, I got it now.
So, well, do you wanna walk through them, or do you want us...
Yeah, I mean, skipping out the preamble there, the first point is, apparently is point number three, the determination of seasonal high groundwater elevation must be provided in order to confirm that the infiltration trench and the diaphragm infiltration trench are provided with a two-foot separation. There's a, a number of comments, sort of back and forth over discussions that our engineers had with Quinn. The final point as of today is, the BMP sizing calculations in section three still contain references to groundwater recharge and drawdown calculations, although an under drawing is provided in the trench and no recharge is provided. The references to groundwater recharge must be eliminated, and we have eliminated those, those references to groundwater recharge.
Is that an updated drawing that we're receiving, or...
It's, it's the, is it that package there, or is it the...
Yes, we got these comments yesterday, and we brought some updated drawings.
I just wanted to have those with David, make sure that all his dotted Ts crossed.
Number nine, I believe.
Yeah, no comments or questions on that part? So the, the, number nine is, proposed grading of the access drive located on the western portion of the site will concentrate runoff along the inside edge of the driveway and will likely result in ponding at the low point at the elevation 1050. The grading must be revised to effectively shed runoff and minimize concentrated runoff flowing onto the gravel driveway surface. We've obviously responded to Quinn, they haven't, obviously had time to respond for tonight's meeting. However, proposed handling this is, have a condition within a special permit that says that no construction could commence until final road advisory is approved by the town's engineer, as it, it would just be a review on that point.
Okay. From an engineering standpoint, some very minor grading impacts that that comment addresses, and we, yeah, we've addressed those, so that just to restore positive grade initial, make sure that, that everything ranges within the site. That's your question.
So we're anticipating that following Quinn's review of this, they agree with this latest set of plans, however, we're prepared to work with them to any as many revisions as required to ensure there's no ponding at that, at that point.
So, our conditions would be, until Quinn approves it, there's no construction? Good enough?
Okay, number 11.
Number 11 is to do with the accuracy of the property boundaries. These are, these are based on MASTIAS data, and they're gonna be confirmed via an on-ground survey, just to confirm that we're, obviously not within 50 feet of any mark boundaries, except for at that one point, if you remember, up north of the site, along here, where we are gonna be within 50 feet of the boundary, and these tin parcels at the top there.
So you will be having professional survey?
We, we always have professional survey. They will obviously set out the boundaries, the limits to wetlands, limit, limit clearing, and they also provide direct points for the array to go in, to ensure that everything is positioned in the right, right locations.
We actually got the boundary survey back, just recently, and we'll just make sure that they match up to the final plans as well.
We'll see once again.
We're happy with that?
Okay.
It could be part of Quinn's final review.
And then, obviously, the next four are all dissolved.
There's just three.
13, 14, 15, and 16. I don't know how much you want me to go.
They're resolved, I'm fine. Yeah. Got the stamp, so that's pretty much good for me.
Okay, any other questions, the comments from the board?
Is that, that 50 feet that through the driveway, is that being asked for a waiver, then?
At this point, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So make sure it was right.
Any questions, the comments from the public?
Yeah, how many solar farms are we talking about?
Ten?
And how many are already here?
Right now, we're talking about this, this set of plans.
Total, that's what I'm saying.
You'd not like?
Yeah.
That's the discussion that we can have after we finish this part of a hearing.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, no more comments? No more comments, or just two conditions?
That's what it looks like to me.
Because I've got one, what was it? I've got the one...
Oh, the knock box.
Pardon?
The knock box.
Knock box.
The knock box, that's the commission.
Oh, that's right, okay.
That's just the commission.
Sure.
Thank you.
With the fire chief?
Yes, we get the application from the fire chief, the knock box.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we go to the fire department, we get the application, we fill it out, and then send it off, and they, they get the exact one that they need.
I was just, I answer a question from one of the young members. I was just pointing out that there are standard conditions, and that these would be special conditions placed...
In addition, yeah.
Well, about the waiver, before we close it, just got one question. Their waiver, is that part of the public hearing, or is that something that we have to vote on as part of the special conditions? Because they're requesting a waiver.
It'll be, it will be a note within the...
Okay.
I had a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna think. Treasure Valley 1, Treasure Valley 2, Morgan Hill, Glenwood, Washington.
Washington. Not yet, Washington.
Washington.
So six currently and 10 more to come?
That are there.
That are there.
Six are here and more coming.
Not online, no, but gone through the.
Didn't the town meeting, they also agree to use some town property for solar?
Right, and there's two of those, so there's going to be 12.
There's two, wasn't there?
Yes. Wheeler, Techle Tree, and the Rutland Heights.
12 already, interesting.
In, in the works. Well, I shouldn't say in, in the works, because technically, the, the two of them on town own property. We don't have an application.
The RP has not gone out.
The RP has gone out. We've got proposals.
Yeah, the proposal went out, right. We're waiting back for the sign from.
Is there any kind of limit on how many can come into town?
Not according to the bylaw.
Didn't see you guys thinking.
By it's that.
Because nobody, when we wrote the bylaw, in our wildest dreams, we never, ever thought that this would happen, so.
And nobody's looking at changes to that?
Pardon me?
Nobody's looking at changing that?
That's what, the, the change would have to be what you were discussing, I believe, your petitions.
Well, I mean, that was a certain, yeah, aspect of it.
I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, no, I mean, that change was an aspect of it as far as distance, but there's nobody questioning how many can move into Rutland? Like, are we going to sell quarter of the town to solar companies?
Depends on the person that owns the parcel of land, right? That's selling.
So it's just open to all business?
Even presidential property?
And how come I don't see them in other towns like Princeton?
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is.
Princeton, Oakham, Hubbardston.
I try, I try to that, I see most of them I seem to see here, other than when I get out of this area.
No, no, this is, and it, it obviously has to do somehow with state incentives and funding and whatever.
Why not?
In the past six months, it's, it's just, it's happening.
Did you read this one about state funding and how?
That means nothing.
Doesn't mean anything?
No, because we don't, we don't, we don't tax the way that they're describing there. We don't tax it, you know, the town of Rutland is not taxed as personal property, which is what the towns that are in trouble were doing. But what, if you read the article, it talks about pilot, the pilot, well, that's what Rutland has always, all of ours are under pilot agreements.
So when are you going to be able to share the revenue for each project, how much town is generating? Because I haven't seen those numbers yet and, and like you say, 12 solar farms are already approved and revenue should be public, right?
Well, not yet, not all, 12 approved.
Okay.
Six are proposed.
So for those six, right?
You should be able to go to the town treasurer and ask.
Pilot programs are.
Well, it should be part of the submission as well, right?
No, it's not, the planning board is not, not negotiated. I believe it's a select board, a select board?
Assessors.
Assessors.
Well, they're, they're part of it too.
The solar committee that negotiates, but the select board.
Well, that kind of contradicts what you just said the other day, right? You say the purpose of solar bylaws, right, are to promote, right, development and to protect the residents, right? There is a double meaning to that sentence, right? So when you say promote development, right, so when you say promote development, I'm assuming that there is going to be some revenue generating, right? If you are promoting it globally in local town, right, when, when a submission for new project is, is being discussed, right, I'm assuming that there is going to be some revenue and numbers discussed as well, right? Which I don't see in any of these projects that are.
Because it's not an issue that the planning board directly gets involved in.
I get it, I get it. But the bylaws are, you guys going by the bylaws, right? So solar bylaws, right, if that's promoting and, and protecting, right, if that's in your purpose, I would like to see that numbers will be discussed when you have projects on, on, on the table.
Well, that's a good point and we'll certainly take that under consideration, but I mean, it's not in the bylaw right now, it's not under our purview, it's not something that we are charged with doing.
So bylaws, right, so you're saying that if residents are not filing petitions or requesting, you know, residents to stand behind them and changing the bylaws, these board will never, ever consider any changes to the bylaws?
Well, that's not exactly true, because we do revise bylaws and we do have a committee who looks at the bylaws, but Sylvia, you and I could talk for a long time here, but we do have other things on our agenda, so I think we need to get back to this.
Well, this is why we're here.
Pardon me?
I think this is the reason we're here.
Was brought up that we should change a few things.
Well, so you see, I have been going to this board for, for a few months, right? You guys know, it's, I'm not happy with what is happening here, right? And, and, and solar project is really affecting, so there is, I only own, only own 22 acres in Rutland and I'm going to have three different solar farms around my property and I only own 22 acres. That is insane, don't you think so? 22 acres, if I own 100 acres, I understand that, okay.
What would you like us to do about, Sylvia?
I will, I will like this board.
To do what this board should do?
To be honest and to be kind. I would like this board to hold solar projects, right? Because I, as you can see, the bylaws that are currently approved and written.
If you would.
Were not strong enough.
I know, that's true.
To protect the residents. I, I understand it's for development of the town, that makes sense, but the town is not really getting a lot of money for it, so why would you destroy residents' population, the, the beautiful natural resources that these towns?
How do you want me to do that? You know, do you want this board to, to say no law?
No, no, how about you step back, because you have too many projects already on your table, right?
We do, but we.
Step back, revise the bylaws, because it's going to be much faster and more effective to do it from your side than to do it from our side. In that way, you will support the residents' side.
It's going to take about the same amount of time.
If we, Sylvia.
Because you would need to read, you would need to have the committee that would write the new bylaws, you'd have to.
Here is the committee, right?
Get to the select board, it's the same process.
You're the chairman, you're the chairman of planning board, you're the chairman of solar committee board, so I think it will really start with you. And we would like to sit with you and rewrite them. We will help you, we will. I will be part of the team.
I work for federal government.
I will help you with anything, I, I think I have the background, but I, I think it will be great if we can do this together and we will help you, we will participate in everything, but it has to change, because the way we're going right now, it's destroying the town.
We're selling the whole town out to, to power companies.
Talk to Boston.
Talk to Boston?
Well, we're the ones that are on Rutland.
Well, no, I understand that, but doesn't the town have any say in this?
Not really. But you have done bylaws, right, you have bylaws.
But now. I mean, the founding fathers of Rutland must be turning in their graves, because I don't think they would approve of all of this. I don't think they would have.
Maybe they would, because it's changed.
I have a question real quick. If, if there are so many solar farms everywhere, is there, in the town of Rutland, we've got the six that are already here, the 12 that are being proposed, what compensation are the residents getting? Is there deferred on my electricity bill? I am all about the clean energy, I am all about renewable energy, I understand that these are the things that have to.
This is all about profit, though. This is not going to do it.
What, what benefit do I as a resident have from this, to have this?
The town is collecting money through these pilot payments. I, I can only maybe give a rough guess at this point. I, I would say that the, the town is probably now collecting somewhere close to $100,000 a year.
How well am I going to say? How does that affect me? As a person with a solar farm in their backyard, how will that affect me? What benefit will I get? Is this a meeting for that or do I need to go to a different meeting for that?
There is not any other way.
The, the benefit.
There really is no benefit to the homeowner.
Well, wait a, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay. I'm just in the information gathering portion, sorry.
The benefit is in the fact that you live in a commonwealth. Think about that term. A common wealth. That money comes into the town, it goes into the general fund, and it provides services. It provides your fire, your police, it provides DPW.
School budget.
School budget.
Well, speaking of fire, they do have a history of catching on fire, which I've read a lot about that. Now, I lost my previous home and have lived on Bushy Lane for one year because I lost my previous home due to fire, that is my number one concern, it took two and a half years to rebuild my life. I don't want something that's going to catch on fire and destroy my life again. So what preventative measures will be taken to make sure that they don't catch on fire? Because I understand you can't just unplug.
No, but monitors, though, do they? I mean, is there anybody, is there solar farms there?
They're, they're continuously monitored.
How?
Online, by computer.
Online, by computer.
They're, they're.
What, now, what about all these solar farms that I've read about online and they're all over the country, but not only, they're en masse and they're other, and other, other similar situations? Just take, for example, the old story about Aaron Brockovich. Town water was polluted by a power company, I forget.
BSCNG.
BSCNG. With, everybody within two miles had kids growing up with leukemia, with all kinds of cancers.
Was this from a solar farm?
It wasn't a solar farm, it was a power company.
Power company.
Solar, solar farms are also known for producing chemicals that can leak into the ground or the, or the water. How, who's preventing that? Who's monitoring?
The radioactivity, the, the.
Well, as soon as you say that, federal government, that doesn't reassure me too much. They, they all, they all assured those people nothing was going to happen. It happened in Southern Hampshire, where my son lives, Bedford.
And there's no radioactive.
The people must take a shower.
It's because of a sol, because of a solar farm?
Not because, but other similar type of thing, a, a private business.
Then, then, you're saying you don't want anything to ever happen anywhere?
Not in our backyard and in industrial area. What about in industrial area?
I think the next step would be.
I mean, Bushy Lane, not in industrial area.
Are you the company that's doing this? Who's the route? There's too many people talking. There's too many people. Could you please repeat what you've just said to this man?
I was just, I was just saying that the, 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 the different types of solar technology, solar photovoltaics does not have the cadmium 14, which is what is in thin film tech, uh, technology for solar panels.
What does it have?
It, it's silicone.
Silicone? And what do they use to kill the vegetation?
Nothing. We cut, we cut the grass. We plant, any, any.
No chemicals dumped in there?
No, if there's soil disturbance, what we do is we, we, when we replant it, we plant it with a low-growth grass, so it doesn't grow particularly tall, or it's one that grows tall and falls over. The panels sit sort of three foot off the bottom of the, of the soil to allow for snow to fall off the front, so the grass generally gets cut twice a year. We, we don't really care about the vegetation underneath because it doesn't really impact on what we're doing.
And your supports are, are carbon steel, correct?
They are, they're, they're galvanized.
Galvanized carbon steel.
Are these solar farms surrounded by warning signs?
They are, same as any electrical, then you can go to the electrical room here and you'd see a warning on the panel board here that says that you shouldn't put your hands in it. It's electricity, you shouldn't be.
So what happens to the wildlife that's out there?
Well, obviously, if it can crawl under the fence, because the fences that go around it, no, it doesn't get electrocuted. If, if an animal was to chew through the wire, the PV wire has a bitter substance on it to prevent pests from chewing it, because obviously that's a maintenance issue. So a lot of the wiring and things, that isn't enclosed in standard electrical housing. So the wires that run along the racking has a bitter material in it that, that plants, sort of the, the birds and rats and things like that wouldn't tend to eat. Anything that can crawl under the fence, because there's a six-inch predigat, so any small animals can, can walk, walk underneath. Deer can actually jump over the fence, the amount of times I've had to chase a deer out of a, a solar farm is pretty regular, so they, they generally can jump over it if they want to. But yeah, we, you're cutting down trees, well, it's not on our side, but sometimes when you're cutting down trees, it changes the habitat, but the, the, the grass and things that grows underneath increases insects, increases birds, it's a different environment.
So there's no high voltage coming out of a solar farm?
It, it, it is the same voltage that the, the, the power lines that run on the roads are.
Which is high voltage?
It's 13A, yeah.
How about batteries and inverters, do, do, does that high voltage, right?
Uh, no, the, the inverters generally run at 480, 48 volts. Some of them are 208 as well.
How about the heat that's generated off the solar panels? Because we read studies.
Again, you're probably conflating technologies. There's a, there's a solar thermal, which obviously is all about heat, because it heats hot water, or there's the mirror technology, which diverts sunlight onto a central boiler to heat it up. Photovoltaics, I mean, it's glass, it sits in the sun, it gets hot, but there's plenty of, of wind circulation and things, it, it doesn't get any hotter than, I mean, you could stand next to them in the middle of the summer and you don't, you don't feel heat off them.
I have to disagree with you, because I have a solar, solar panels on my roof and I have to disagree with you, they get pretty hot.
Yes, but your solar panels on your roof, they don't have the air moving around them to keep them cool. When you're, when they're in a field, they've obviously got air backwards and forwards, there's a different calculation that you have to do to determine.
Seems like you have answer for everything.
Sorry?
It seems that you have answer.
I just know the technology, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on solar, but yeah, when you have solar, when you're doing calculations, instead of the production, if it's on a roof, you have different calculations because the heat is much higher.
But it's still the same type of panel, right?
It's still the same type of panel, yeah, but it's, it's like having something hot and you, you put it in the air, or you, hot, you put it in a box, if you put it in a box, it keeps hot longer.
You listen to this, why don't you get a program together with these guys and, and do something for the, for the town and show it?
Yeah, so, I mean, the panels do get hot, you can, you can go up to them in the bright sunshine and put your hands on them, they're hot, but if you're stood right in front of them, and I, I do every single day of my life stand in front of these arrays, you don't feel the heat coming off them. On a roof, yes, you, you, you feel it a lot more, but that's generally because the, it's got your, the heat's coming up from the roof, that's the one.
Would you like a 50, would you like solar farm 50 feet from your home?
It wouldn't be 50 feet from my home, it's, I've got one that's about 300 feet from my home, 400 feet from my home, it, I, I can't see it, obviously visibility is a thing, I wouldn't necessarily mind if I could see it, depending on whether I look on the front or the back. If you look at the front, I, I actually think they look quite nice, but it's subjective, you might not like the look of them.
So if I were to go look for a home, say in Rutland, and I'm looking for a four-bedroom home, I'm not going to want to say, oh, to the real estate agent, I would like to see a solar farm right in front of my home or in back of my home. Property values are going to go down. That's known studies that show that they have gone down.
That, that is not something that obviously is for me to consider, I mean, there, there are, there is scant evidence that, that it does, that, that, yeah.
Well, common sense would tell you, when, when people go look for a house, you know, they're looking for certain things, they're not looking for nuclear power plant.
People aren't going to, it's not a new clip power plant.
Well, it's very similar.
No, it's, it's nowhere near similar to a new clip.
Well, to me, it is.
Well, then, learn a little bit more about it, because. Because there's always a reason someone will buy a house.
I'm in the utility business, so I'm going to say.
It's a power plant, it's not a farm.
No, it's not. I have no idea what a power plant is.
Why do they use the term?
A power plant is defined as a fossil or a, a fuel-based system. It's not a power plant.
Why do they define it as a farm? Is it a farm?
It's a solar farm.
It's a farm, so what are they farming?
Energy generating, right?
They're farming like rays from the sun.
Harvesting.
Harvesting. No, they're not growing it, they're farming.
I mean, the terminology is very, it's not very accurate. Has nothing to do with farming.
Okay, we are going to move on.
I just have one more question of this representative here. Is, is there any, um, solar radioactive byproducts?
Any electrical appliance gives off electromagnetic field, the lights in here, do TVs, everything like that, there, there is no ionizing electromagnetic field that gives off, which is the one that causes cancer. So if electromagnetic field is ionizing, then it does, none of, none of the technology included in solar farms is ionizing.
Okay, onward. This is now a, we're past 7 o'clock, right?
Yes.
Continuation of the public hearing for a solar facility on 29 Campbell Court.
That's me again. As we discussed in the meeting that happened before December, we didn't feel that there was a due time to be able to address both of the projects, I'd like to ask for continuation to this stage and would ask for it to come back on the agenda at a later date, but it's heading over to the next meeting.
Okay, so we're looking for another continuation.
You wanted a month up, not a couple, not two?
Yeah.
It's our next meeting, March.
Sorry.
I'm hoping to be back on the day of the 2nd, the first meeting in March. March 12th is the only, yes, March 12th.
We need a date.
Oh, so the next one is. Oh, we, we said for March 12th.
So, March twelfth, I guess, is what, meeting? March twelfth, is that our meeting?
March?
No.
Fifth? Yep, it's February.
So you're looking at February twelfth?
The board has a meeting on February twelfth, and then two weeks from that, whatever that Tuesday is, thank you, the twenty-sixth?
I will not be here.
Neither of us?
Neither one of them.
Then after that, there's a March meeting, which I don't have the date.
That's fine.
March twelfth is...
That's fine.
Then March twelfth or March twenty-sixth?
March twelfth is okay.
Yep.
Dick will be here for that.
March twelfth, seven o'clock. Okay. Let's see, onward. Oh, shit, a motion to continue to March twelfth at seven.
Motion.
Challenge motion.
Motion, second.
In favor?
I agree.
So are they given a choice, you either have windmills or a solar farm on the property?
Not all areas in town, you know, for wind turbine.
Is it, would be who that sounds?
They tried it at Rockland Heights, it didn't come up the pile. I know they had one over there at Pepper, and that didn't come up the pile, so they just put one on there.
There's a separate bylaw for...
Not every hunk of land gets enough wind to turn the turbines.
Not like the, not what you was it? The air has to go around it, and that's why they had a perfect spot for those that they had there. Or a, you know, that, or those two there. January eighth, Bushy Lane.
Bushy Lane, okay. Okay, next public hearing, continuation on ZBT Energy Solutions, a solar at ninety Bushy Lane. Once again, we have a Quinn report.
For the record, Chris Ansh with Hanning Engineering. I think the best course for this is to review the changes that we've made to the site plans, and then we can review the comments provided by Quinn for his review. Just as a reminder here, we have Bushy Lane running along the northern portion of the property, which will be the access point to the actual solar array. And we have Paddock Road along this portion, so it's in the rear portion of the property. After the last hearing, we took a second look at the layout and configuration of the panels relative to the vegetative buffer and the concerns of the various suppliers. As such, we have left the fifty-foot required vegetative buffer along all the residential properties along the northern portion of the site and along the other various portions of the site as well. So with that statement, we are, in my opinion, in compliance with zoning regulations with respect to the vegetation buffer around the actual array itself. That was the primary change. That was made, a few other small tweaks relative to drainage and access points for Quinn's review. But from that standpoint, that's pretty much all that's changed on the site plans themselves. The board would like, I can run through Quinn's comments and address any other, the various concerns that he had.
I guess my question is, that new site plan is what this January eighth letter is based upon, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent.
Are we allowed to get a copy of that? Or is that public knowledge going to go to the council?
It would be available from the...
Please give me the planning board. When?
We've just, we can call or email, and we can send electronically to you if that works.
Okay, we'll see after the meeting, thank you.
So Quinn's first comment is relative to the stormwater analysis we've performed on this project and the other ones various in the area. Our analysis takes into full comprehensive review of all the disturbance for all the projects. So he's just further stating that he has no further comment regarding that statement. Second comment was relative to the previously approved solar array off Glenwood Road. That, again, we made some modifications to the analysis interpretation, and he just wanted that to be updated in this branch analysis. And then design point, or comment number three kind of continues on that comment list. Comment number four was relative to a discrepancy in how him and I reviewed our stormwater analysis. I have been in contact with Carl Holgren with Quinn Engineering. Him and I have talked about this, and we've eliminated his concerns. It's a relatively minor change, discrepancies of several, a couple of feet here and there. We understand that this is a change that needs to be made, so we are requesting that as part of the condition of approval, or anticipated condition of approval, that we get a clean drainage analysis sign-off from Carl prior to the issues of the decision.
Could you explain the whole drainage project? I don't really understand, I don't understand that.
Okay. Let's see how I can serve this. So when we perform drainage analysis, we can take a look at the various soil types and the actual land use, characteristics of the land, be it woods, grass, pavement, gravel, whatever it may be. And we run a hydraulic analysis on that based on various technical engineering reports and memorandums that have been issued over the various years. So as part of our drainage analysis, we take a look at all this information and determine what the rates of flow of stormwater during various storm events are at certain points along the property. And then we look at that both in the pre-development, prior to anything happening, and the post-development, being after construction. Massachusetts has instituted a stormwater management regulation, which states that we have various standards that we have to meet, one of which is treatment, recharge, and peak rate mitigation. So that's primarily what we look at for these projects, because there's not much impervious areas, and there's nothing that generates the pollution load that's typical with stormwater management, be it a parking lot. There's no parking, there's nothing like that, that generates the sand, the salt, the various oils and stuff of cars. So what that leaves us with primarily is peak rate mitigation. So what we've done is, we've reviewed several points along the entire area. This project is one of many in this area. So what we've done is, we've reviewed all that work as if it was happening all at once. So we're not taking into account any projects not accounting for, or some certain land disturbance causing any undue increase in peak rate. So with that being said, we review all that, and we, our design utilizes various detention basins, which capture and detain the stormwater for a certain period of time and allow for the controlled release of it over time. And that's all under stormwater management that gets reviewed by Quinn Engineering. He's another PE, he goes through all my math and all my calculations to confirm that what I'm providing is accurate.
It conforms to the state stormwater laws.
So with that being said, we did the entire design, and at certain points, we do not exceed the peak rate of flow during any storm event. And we analyze up to the hundred-year storm event, which is a six-and-a-half-inch storm. So that's a rather large storm. Comment number five is relative to the flood zone A in the area. When you look at Mass GIS, flood maps and the FEMA flood maps are based around old approximate locations of contouring the shape of the land and everything like that. With that being said, they never really quite line up with the actual contouring of the land themselves. In this case, the actual flood zone encroaches about twenty feet up into the high point of the property. It's an unnumbered zone A, which means that there is potential for a hundred-year flooding event, but it's never been fully analyzed. With that being said, the actual elevation of the area around it is sitting around, or around the beaver pond that's in the area is around one fifty or ten fifty. Our limited disturbance is way up at ten seventy. That would equate to a twenty-foot flood event, which is not gonna happen. I can say that with high certainty. But nevertheless, it is a protected zone under FEMA, so we do have to go back through conservation for amended order conditions, review the floodplain issues with them. There's no physical earth movement that generates the requirements under FEMA, the flood protection zones and everything like that. But that's another step that we have to do prior to construction. So his comment is relatively just saying that we acknowledge that there's an issue, and we're gonna be going back before the commission to review this. But there's not gonna be too much, there shouldn't be any significant changes to the plan.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Is this, through the chair, is this something that we should condition to basically get a report from the ConCon saying that there's no changes?
It says that right through in paragraph.
It's on the, it is on the paper.
Bottom line, it says...
It's recommended.
Resulting from conservation.
Well, no, I'm just saying we should put that as a condition.
And as part of the sign-off for your building permit?
Yeah.
You have to get a conservation sign-off, so... Once they see that there's a flood zone A and they never, we never disclose that, they're automatically gonna go throw the red flags up, and it's all gonna be a sorry. So it's imperative to get that addressed.
You have a ConCon reader?
Yeah.
I still think it'd be...
I just wanted to make sure.
Chris, I have a question, or should I wait till you're done?
It's up to the board.
I didn't hear your question.
I, oh no, I have a question, can I ask now, or should I...
Is it regarding?
Yes, it's regarding ninety Bushy Lane.
Item five on the...
I don't know, no. I don't know, I don't have your document.
Okay, let's...
We'll wait till the end.
Let's wait until we finish with this document.
Just wanted to get one more correct, so let's see, only other one that's not resolved.
Yeah, I can keep going to that, too.
Okay.
Comment number six, relative to our point of analysis. Originally, we used a culvert at the end of, at the intersection of the wetland series and across Paddock. Quinn's comment was regarding that, he felt that it was too far away from the actual limited disturbance. So we actually relocated our design point to the actual property line in that area. There's a natural swale that forms through there, so we just analyzed to that point. So, and again, it's compliant with stormwater management, so this...
Are you talking about the end of Paddock Road near sixty-eight?
Yeah, there's a large culvert that goes underneath.
Because there's a lot of water that floods in that area.
There is a flood zone.
Yeah.
That is a flood zone.
Where they just built two new homes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that being said, we relocated our design point and made it a little bit more conservative. The major point with stormwater management is, the larger the area of disturbance, the less you have to do. So we actually just shrink it a little bit more. It's only by a few acres, it doesn't make or break anything, but it provides a little bit more of a conservative analysis. Comment number seven, in our analysis, we looked at two different models, one being a cumulative report and one being a micro-analysis, being at each outlet of the beaver ponds in that area. And then his comment is relative to that I didn't carry over one of my water sits in the cumulative, so he just wants that to be rectified, it's as simple as copying and paste. That's my error, but it's still compliant with stormwater management, so, that being said. Comment number eight is relative to the battery slab. We have relocated it so that it is further away from the detention basin. Number nine, we relocated the outlet pipe from detention basin nine to allow for a little bit extra cover over the top of it. And comment number ten is relative to the impervious core that we provided along the spillway. This has been his general comment regarding everything. We've had a couple of conversations about this. He's just saying that he's acknowledging it as a document.
Should we have a condition like the seven?
Seven, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, comment number seven, we would kind of roll into comment number four, rise of drainage analysis, I'll sign off.
Okay, you had a question?
Can I stand up and go look at your map and ask you a question? So this is, this is right next to our house, so ninety Bushy Lane would be, this is Paddock, this is...
That's our property.
That's your property. Okay, so our house is right next door, so where's ninety Bushy Lane on this map?
The whole green.
The whole, where is ninety?
The whole green area.
Oh, okay. So this is the road, are you clearing this road? Because right now it's just full of branches and trees and...
There'll be a twenty-foot wide gravel access strip that'll be constructed through there.
Are you going to be putting warning, danger, electricity signs all up this road to lead to the solar panels, that we're gonna be able to say that?
It's all gonna be underground conduit all the way up to the proposed utility poles at the entrance to the site. Generally, is there...
No. Electrical code is only on the perimeter fence.
Yep, it'll be the chain link fence around the array, we'll have the signs.
So will, as you go up this road, it's gonna, like, you're gonna see that right from the road, the signs?
As you're driving down the road, you'll see, at the end of the driveway, you'll see the signs on the fence itself, but there won't be signs posted as you move down the driveway.
So going up the driveway, we're right here, so...
So the fence starts right through here.
Okay.
Encloses the entire array.
So the whole light green area in the middle is the actual solar farm, and all of the darker green is the entire property?
Yeah, the darker green is the woodland, the lighter green is the area that's gonna be cleared. One of the things that we do for our solar arrays, we institute a shade buffer along the southern portions of the property. So we will cut down the larger trees, maintain the smaller, low-growth vegetation to help maintain that natural habitat as much as possible. It also limits earth disturbance and various other things. Only other requirement for that is that every couple of years, if a tree gets too large, they go down, trim it by hand, and scatter the branches and stuff around to allow for a little bit further habitat enhancement.
I can ask you one more question. Where do the power lines run? Because apparently, if you're farming power, that's what I understand, it has to be sent somewhere.
Yep.
Does it go on a truck, or does it go by a power line? No, I'm just, I'm being facetious.
I know.
But...
It'll go underground to a series of utility poles and connect to the existing infrastructure.
It's solvable right down Bushy Lane?
Yes.
To Paddock Road?
Yes.
And out to, what, sixty-eight?
Yes. Yep.
So in regards to the trees, are you gonna mark the trees, which trees will be cut down prior to the installation? Or what's the procedure?
The...
You're talking about size of trees, right? So I'm assuming that the large trees will be marked before, are they gonna be...
Generally, we do, as part of the overall construction process of this, prior to any earth disturbance that happens on these sites, a survey crew will actually go out and mark the limited disturbance, or the limited clearing around the entire area.
What does it mean?
That means a guy goes out there with a robotic station. They'll fly the trees. They'll fly the tree limits with, yeah. They'll fly the limits of clearing, the limit of what can be cleared. In the meantime, they'll also install, or mark the erosion control and other various aspects of the project. And at that point, it gets cut. And the trees will be selectively cut as needed, at the discretion of the actual...
Yeah, they won't be removed and stumped, they're just gonna cut, tuck the tree down.
Yeah.
Sure.
So the tree still has a root and able to control water.
Go ahead. I just have a question. Is there, and I don't know if this is a question for you or you guys, or I don't know. Is there a possibility that this solar farm here, that you have this lighter green, that that'll be expanded upon at some point, or is that it forever?
That's it forever on this property. This property has a significant portion of wetland.
Wetland, right.
So, and it also has DCR jurisdiction, primary and watershed protection zones.
Okay.
So we can't touch that at all either. In addition to that, there's also a DEP stormwater protection zone, too, which further limits what we can do in the area.
Okay.
So what you see is what you're gonna get as well.
Now, is this a map that's available? If we go to, the town clerk would have this map, or is this map only available from you?
This plan has been submitted to the planning board, so they should have a copy of that.
So it's not even finalized until they approve it, or...
This, until they vote and approve on the project, the plan is up in the air still. But once they approve the plan, nothing can change on it significantly.
And is that the solar committee that has to approve that plan? Who approves that plan?
Planning board.
The planning board, you guys, okay. And when will that happen? Is that, do you guys, I apologize, because this is my first time at one of these meetings. Do you guys vote on that, like, with all, you know, the whole meeting? Or is it something you guys do in private?
No, it's done in a public meeting.
It is done in a public, okay.
And where are the inverters?
The inverters are located right through here.
The inverters are located right through here. So the scale is at one hundred, so you're looking at about a hundred and fifty feet almost to the actual inverter pad from the property line at all.
Okay, so we're over here, so we're pretty far away.
Now, Bushy Lane was just paved.
Yeah.
Right? So to put underground lines, what does that mean? They have to tear it up again?
No, no, no.
Or they're going underground?
He's going to poles on Bushy Lane.
Oh, so it's just going down the driveway to the poles?
Then going up to the poles.
Yep.
And that's all just electric lines?
All electric lines, exactly what's out in front of your house right now.
How loud are the inverters?
They're equivalent of an HVAC unit when you're standing right next to them. Because of the open air, everything and the fence line and everything like that and the trees, by the time you get, I think it was like a hundred feet out.
Hundred.
It's background noise.
I, that's not true. I went around some solar farms in past couple of weeks and it sounded like generator noise. And I was right next to it.
When you're standing right next to it, yes.
Yes, and that's pretty loud.
So it was an HVAC unit.
So a hundred feet is very, very short distance, right?
We have provided a document that was issued by the actual state, further outlining the noise issue and documenting that, too. So that has been provided to the board. If they don't have copies of it, we can make sure they get another round of it, too. But it is a state-issued document.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
Other than the conditions, the reconditions, that's all.
Out there.
There's no waivers, correct?
Nope, we pulled all our solar stuff away from the property line by fifty feet, so.
Excellent. I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
Also a move?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, just a question before you leave. Can I see, like, out there with the map?
If there's any questions, I can answer them through the board. I prefer that.
I just wanted to look closer at the map, that's all.
Absolutely.
It's not, I'm not going to ask any question.
Okay.
I promise.
I can't, I can't answer any questions outside, though.
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
Okay, we are, on to the next.
Are you staying for a little bit of the meeting?
So this is a continuation of the public hearing on ZPT Energy Solutions for two fifty-eight East County Road.
Line them up, right.
Through the chair, we don't really, if they're resolved, since we're sort of moving time out here, do we just want to cover the points from the board that are open at this point?
Yeah.
I think that would be good.
I'm just trying to cut some time down.
Yeah. Just resolved, I don't, or no further comment, I don't have an issue with it, just ones that are open that I want to hear about.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
I know, I got you.
Okay, this one, number one is a repeat anyway.
Yeah, so a lot of these comments are repeats. He kind of just copied and pasted all our comments. And again, because this drainage analysis is incorporated into the previous, his comment regarding the consistencies of the reaches through the watershed, again, that'll just be rectified under that revised drainage analysis. Let's see. Comment number six, that's deferred to the board. This access drive is being utilized by the other previously approved solar array. His comment is just relative to making sure that when that, if that gets constructed slightly before this one, that all changes that are shown on this as more comprehensive are incorporated into that design.
That's a condition of funding that.
Yeah, so prior to construction, we'll issue a full plan set, show me everything. Comment number eight, a slight discrepancy in the interpretation of the watersheds. I reviewed it again with Quinn and he's amenable to the same comments that we had regarding the other drainage analysis questions, so I would request that that be also made a part of the condition of approval.
Is that tied into four, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that all gets wrapped into one.
That's what I was going to say, two guys on the condition. And that's, and there's ten.
And then.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen is, again, his boilerplate comment regarding the spillway.
Yeah.
Relative to actual layout of the site, not much has changed. We are still requesting the five-foot waiver along the western or eastern property line. Again, this property is owned by the applicant and we have provided a letter from him signing off on that he's okay with us cutting five feet of his property or that property line of his.
So we have, we have, that's the question I've got.
It should have been in the submittal package with all the comments and stuff that we made.
I'm not sure I have a copy of that. If you could just resend that.
Yeah.
Was it an email this afternoon?
Nope, that was when we submit all those revised plans.
Perhaps we have the box right here, actually. We can take a quick look.
Landowner, found it right there. There you go, right there. Yeah. I have no objections or anything. You got it, man?
Jowets.
You got it?
Yeah.
All right. November twenty-four, so he signed it two months ago.
Was that what's the date?
November twenty-four.
Besides that, not much on the plan has changed. Drainage is still where it is, the access road, a little bit minor grading tweaks just to smooth out, but besides that, not much has changed on the plan.
And of course, the pile of dirt will be moved.
That will definitely be relocated.
Would that be a condition or is that?
That's actually, our access drive actually plows right through it.
It does.
Yes. So that will be redusited and loan would be placed all over the site.
Kind of like, actually, how that, what that was supposed to be.
This is actually one of the more prime examples of a solar array. An old landfill, or land pit, sorry.
Do you guys have to get, and this is a question through the chair, that's what I'm looking for, right away from the.
Yep, we do have to go through.
National Grid?
Yeah, we have to get a consent agreement through them. That's a private.
Okay.
Agreement that's made between us and National Grid.
Is it National Grid or New England Power?
Same, or National Grid. But these all have to go through National Grid anyway, so it's just another line item on their list.
Is that, is that something we need? Does it record? I don't think so. I'm just asking.
It's a private.
Okay.
Unfortunately, National Grid's a private.
All right, I'm just curious.
Are you going to have underground conduits as well?
Yes, these will be underground conduit to the proposed inverter pads or substation that would be constructed.
So, so just everyone to know, I walk this property every day because my property, I would study a smaller pond, I have to say the picture that you have over here is not accurate.
This is relocated, this is relocated as of a few months ago.
I walk this property twice a day, I can tell you this is not accurate.
Okay, that's your interpretation, but this is, has been surveyed by a licensed land surveyor?
Like the licensed surveyor who cuts trees on my property as well?
If that happened, that's a private matter.
Private matter of which?
The surveyor.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Interesting. Very interesting, okay. So your company cuts trees on my property and that's a private matter?
I cannot either confirm nor deny whatever was cut on a property. I wasn't there, so I'm not going to say yes or no.
But you're representing the company?
I'm representing my company, yes.
Okay.
If there's any other questions relative to the array, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah.
Do you, the. Motion closed? Nope, did I get one more question?
Okay.
The pads, is that pad, is it two or one? I'm trying, I'm trying to see.
Right here or here?
Oh, I need to get up, my vision. What's this, this is a tension pond.
Yeah, it's a tension pond.
The pads are all right here.
Yep, so there's.
And that's.
I know, it's a tension pond.
Okay.
And then the substation will be located.
All right, so this is where the underground conduit will go out to the road or?
The underground conduit, I believe, will go to.
It's, I'm sorry, the sub's over there.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any further comments from the board?
Make, make a motion to close.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye. It's going to be busy by the conditions.
Yeah. A lot of these are pretty similar, so. Okay, well, we have a, whoops. This is a new public hearing, right?
This is also a continuance of a prior hearing, I believe, opened at the last meeting.
This would be Bacon's, right?
Yes.
Because it doesn't say continuation.
That's my, my go. Sorry.
Okay, so this is a continuation of a public hearing on ZPT Energy Solutions for a solar facility at one hundred and one Glenwood Place Extension.
So, I'll start off by mentioning the changes that we have made to the site plan. Again, during the previous hearings, there was concern relative to the fifty-foot buffer, against residential properties. The only two properties that are not under agreement with the actual applicant are located right through here, along the western portion of the property, sorry. As such, we have relocated the tree lines at fifty foot outside that area. We are requesting the five-foot wave, or five-foot buffer along the mass wildlife land, which we discussed in depth at the last hearing, and along the actual property of the Ball parcel, which was a previously approved, or site plan two for our solar array. It should be noted that this entire area is a giant wetland area, so this area can never actually be developed under current regulations, so.
This is the area that Blair is building his, and other five houses.
Yeah, by your house.
Yes, so, yeah.
Get your house.
Yeah, so, so not.
Down to the bottom.
Exactly, so that's going to be five houses.
Up the, up the right hand.
Up here.
Yeah, down there, there's no houses being built.
Yeah, this is at the bottom, that, you know, that really steep hill that goes down? You go past your house, you keep going, there's a flight pole.
And you, yes, and make a, on the right, but on the left, there are going to be another five houses, which is the home association where the houses need to be built?
Yes, that's the road that. We aren't all of that. It's a private way, though.
Which, which is a, yeah, let's, let's just get to that later.
Okay.
I think before we go any further, just go through Quinn's comments again. His comments are real, same issues with the drainage comments. So again, we requested that be a part of the condition, that final.
Four.
Sign-off, yep. Number four, and I believe it's number seven.
Six, his next spill is, yeah.
Yeah, so same comments. That's Quinn's review of everything. That's pretty much the gist of it. Like I said before, we relocated the tree line against residential properties that are under our control by fifty feet. As such, we're in compliance with the zoning relative to those properties.
We have an issue with the, with the Glenwood Place Extension. Didn't that come up with the board for discussion?
The street itself?
Yeah, the street itself.
For, at that point, whatever agreement was made or whatever permit was issued for that road, it is part of whoever had that permit actually issued to them under their control and they have to make that road accessible to the town.
That's, that's not a town road, it's a public.
But the town has to have.
And it's under home association.
That's true, but they also have to sign off on it.
Which, when you start thinking about that home association, right, we're going back to.
With all due respect, that's outside this project, can we?
It's actually in this project because National Grid won't bring any electrical poles to home association private, private land, right? So, so there's going to be an issue, right? Because last time they only allowed us to bring two poles.
This isn't on that property?
But it's leading to that property.
Leading to it.
Yes, so.
So whether you.
So you have half mile where you're not going to have any electrical poles?
That's right, it'd be underground.
Well, but he will have to go, this, this project will have to go through home association property, right? To get to that land, right?
I meant for them to travel on that road, some agreement will have to be with the owner and the home association.
Private, private property, right? So you can go to three, four, five different private properties, right? Because there's going to be five more houses, right? Which are under home association, right?
Right.
So.
That, that road will be.
In the conditions of the special permit that was issued for Blair development.
Yeah, so those five.
They are responsible of updating that road prior to occupancy of, of that estate lots.
When are this?
I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I was saying, in the conditions that, in the special permit that was issued for Blair development for those estate lots, it states in there that Blair Development is responsible of updating that road, the private way, prior to occupancy of those estate lots.
That's a different topic because this is home association.
Right, and so this property is being leased, so it's, it's part of that homeowners' association. The homeowners' trust that's going to be maintaining and operating that road, this, this project is part of it because we're leasing the property.
That will be Bacon, yeah, two different owners, right? So you're talking Blair and Bacon, right? Blair owns the home association, but Bacon doesn't own the home association.
The homeowners' trust is all the estate lots, so this lot plus all the other individual lots is part of the trust.
Bacon's may get to this homeowners' association.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was getting.
Bacon will be a part of that homeowners' association.
So then you have to have five other approvals, right?
Correct.
For those five additional houses.
No.
Part of the home association. You've got six.
That's all done.
Yes.
There is, there is the homeowners' association document.
Okay.
So this is just property line to.
Then they have to agree?
Yeah, but that's a matter between homeowners' association and it's not planning board.
It's not, it's private.
Yeah. Well... We'll have a board of directors.
And we have a large turnaround, so fire needs to get down there.
So it'll be an agreement by the board of directors.
Where's your turner?
I feel sorry for those people.
Okay, you got this down here.
Very sorry.
All right. They've got a turnaround, which is my concern with the safety for fire.
Again, that was already built.
Yeah, I didn't remember that last time.
Yeah, they have a small turnaround near the entrance.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, we have another one that's within our property, so if an emergency vehicle does get down there, they also have access to the site via the Knox box, so if push comes to shove, they can get in and out.
That was my concern, Norm, early on. Did you guys have that in the last plan? I just missed it then, I apologize.
I do have a question, if I may, through the... This whole property, would that be considered a land lot type property? Or was there, is there a back access, maybe you guys could do?
Technically, it has frontage along Glenwood Place.
Well, I'm talking about, there's only one entrance going in.
Yeah, oh yeah, beyond this, it's all landlocked by people who don't, we don't own land on, so...
Yeah, okay.
I have a question, do we have something from Seth saying yea or nay on this?
The fire chief has reviewed all these projects and reported that he does not have any issue.
Okay, that's... Last, right?
Yeah. Make a motion to close.
Second, Dan.
Have not yet.
I'm gonna make sure, okay, and I'll hold on.
Any further questions, comment? None, then I'll end today in the motion.
Make a motion to close the hearing. Eight oh seven.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
He tends second.
Let's have a waiver.
Right.
Northern, southern.
All right, thank you.
Is there no A and Rs?
No A and Rs. Okay.
On line two, so...
Who's gonna get to that?
Uh, on...
I gotta, I think I'm...
And the board last time just closed the hearing with the expectation that staff would write a decision. That decision has been drafted. So if the board's comfortable with it, then we would just be looking for a vote to approve the...
I'm telling you, zero, Ken.
Yes, what the board would have next on its agenda, is to look at that decision.
Yeah. Which... Everybody get a copy of it?
I distributed the copy electronically to the board over about a week ago or so, looking for comments. I also discuss it with the board chair directly. The question is whether I received comments on it. We had a minor comment, which I incorporated that change.
You did change it.
Right, as when you came in, I was on the computer, and I did write that in there.
Okay. And that was like, the fourth line down, it said driveway, and it's not a driveway, it's a town road.
I've corrected that, yeah.
So you corrected it. Okay, that's good.
I know, I looked it over, I didn't see any problems with it. It was pretty well-written.
Yeah. Your house. I'll make a motion to sign the site plan approval. So this also elevates up, and then they're raised down below, so you actually have a big burn there. I think you're here.
I did.
Any discussion?
It does go...
In favor?
Where does, and you said there's not gonna be like...
No, just those grow.
I'm glad.
South side, it's like that. You could be like, oh, we're seeing it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If you need anything, give them a... Yeah, yes, we go line though. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe the applicant has a question, pardon me. We've got this permit, as soon as we mail it out to the applicant, we have administrative things to do on our side before we could distribute this to you. But that'll be happening. You have the vote of record and the signature.
On seven.
We've got two, as we did with the previous one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, notice the decision for common driveway. Once again...
It says merchandising, is this on there?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Again, Dave brought up the thing, I know I reviewed it, I think he sent it out to everybody.
I hear no comments, yeah.
That's what I was hemming and hawing a little bit about.
Because we've always had that in the record, so I'm just like...
This is a site plan review, not a special permit.
I'm talking about the, is there a...
That was a site plan review also. The board has a vote, and the board voted to approve this.
Well, we voted to sign the decision. Right, that's what your motion was.
Well, to approve and sign it. It's kind of one of the same, I'm not sure I see a distinction here.
Uh-oh, well, unless anybody else had a problem.
No, I actually do, because I don't like to approve something until I've looked it over, the final copy, and I've signed and wrote on it. Am I wrong in that aspect? Because we've done that in the past.
The question is whether it should be a separate vote to approve the site plan, and then a vote, and then a separate vote to actually sign the document.
I think, pardon me if I could, I think approving the decision, after you approve the decision and signing it is a formality that perfects what the board has just done by its prior motion of approving it. I don't see the value of the two separate votes. With respect.
Okay, good.
Because our signatures is basically approving the document.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Okay, common drives, anybody have any questions, problems?
Do we need a motion to sign, or is it just...
Yeah.
Motion to approve and sign.
I'll second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Yes, I made the motion.
Send that one down.
So those are, both, is that site plan?
That's, that was also a site plan. Yeah. Okay, onward, Carewell Dental Sign, discussion about recent complaints to Board of Selectmen.
Are you here for that, Skip?
I saw that on there, and I gotta be honest with you, I have no idea what the hell they're talking about.
There was an email that went out, I think, David, you sent that to us, if I'm not mistaken?
It was not a decision of the board, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Okay.
It was not brought up at a board meeting. I have too much of this going on right now at Board Selectmen. We got somebody doing whatever they feel like they're doing, and making decisions for the whole board, which shouldn't be done.
Actually, pardon me if I could, if I, this was by an individual who was not purporting to represent the board. The email was indicating that there was an issue with particular sign and asking for alternatives. Currently, it's before our building inspector, I believe the building inspector is handling this matter here. Only thing the planning board did that is material to this was reviewed a building permit application for the sign, and advised the building inspector on how to proceed at that point. The board did not apparently put any conditions on that sign at all, that's really the background.
Yes, we did.
There were no conditions of approval that were recommended to the building inspector. I reviewed the minutes for the vote for when this was taken, and that there was no conditions.
Didn't we have flashing? I swore that we did.
There was discussion of, but the discussion of did not translate into a condition for, which is an essential prerequisite in order to have a condition. It would have to be actually drafted as such, so that it's plain as to the intent. So at this point, this is more of an FYI to the board, it's currently being handled by the building inspector.
So why does it say BOs?
So Sheila...
Not on my version. I apologize, that's not the case.
It wasn't that the Board of Selectmen made, did anything with the sign, it was that a complaint was made to Sheila Dib, who was on the Board of Selectmen.
I'm on the board, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
And we got five, or three other people on the board.
It's my...
No, no, I'm not thinking on you, but you're...
It's an error, BOs is an error on here, that's an error. I'm just trying to make it plain, that was an error, that's not how this came to be. Came to be as I just described. We apologize for that error showing up on the agenda.
But, so, help me understand, because I'm with Skip on this, I'm tired of this. So, did the individual that's complaining complain to Sheila Dib as a select person, or as an individual?
I'm gonna ask her, because I just saw her in the hallway.
It seems that some citizens expressed a complaint, which was then forwarded to this board and staff, but it was not a formal complaint by the Board of Selectmen, that is correct.
Okay.
And it's currently being dealt with by the building inspector as the zoning enforcement officer, which is the proper way to handle this.
And...
Please, Dick.
To you, to Will, last paragraph, it's also possible they're closer than five feet from the edge of the bound line, or so forth. I personally went out there, and, you know, staked and everything else, and made sure it was, and it was, within a fraction of an inch. So, no, it was over the five foot. But I have to say, I gotta go back into the zoning book and read the talk on by law.
I swear that we talked about, no flashing issue.
The, and I guess that is about the only possibility, okay? In that our bylaw does not allow flashing signs. Now, is a scrolling sign a flashing sign? Okay, or is a sign that the letters...
I've never seen that, the bottom part turned on yet.
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
So, Tim, what's frustrating to me, and I guess legally it doesn't matter, the guy sitting there at the meeting stated that it would not be doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I remember that quite, I remember that.
Whether we should have actually said something.
Well, that's in the minutes, isn't it?
In the minutes, all it says is that he had said the line, this sign would not be flashing, but we didn't actually put any, we just took it, believe it at his word.
We didn't put, we didn't put in there that the LED could not be turned on. That's what we did not put in there.
Yes, I...
He said, he said, if he's...
Yes, but it wasn't expressively written into the bylaw.
And that's what David said, it's not, there's no conditions in there, so I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. All right, so, so Will, you say Will's got it now?
Yeah.
Yes, I think what's, what would really move this along is that if the person who had a particular issue was to seek a request for enforcement directly to the building commissioner, then it would be more actionable. I think of this, it's not really, I think it's, I'm not sure it's as actionable if it was a clear request for enforcement to the zoning enforcement officer. At that point, he would be compelled to make a ruling one way or the other. And then there would be an appeal process, depending on how it played out. And that would be to the zoning board of appeals, from one side or the other, depending on the outcome of his investigation. And at that point, he'd have to make the call whether he thinks it's a flashing sign under the general code, is what the sign by law is, or not. He might decline to take enforcement, and then that would give somebody an appeal right to the ZVA. So I think that's what he would be waiting on at this point.
Is the lumens, didn't we have lumens in our bylaw?
No.
I don't believe that's the case.
No.
I don't believe it specifies a level of illumination at some certain, certain distance.
Therefore, I think through the chair, to the chair, maybe something that we ought to re-investigate.
I shall make note of that.
The zoning bylaw?
Yes. The sign bylaw.
The sign bylaw.
Onto the next, Bryce Lemon, updates continued. We did get a report from Quinn.
Good night, sir.
Yeah. That... They are putting down some gravel on phase two. On the roadway.
David sent something out, like, it's today, too, that I read, that there were some issues with the report from Yankee. That Lee said it's a disgust with Craig Bacon, is that what I read? Is that correct?
Yeah, there is a correspondence from the Fourth of January from Blair to Holgren, and then there was follow-up, according to the board, January eighth. So I believe the January eighth explains where this stands.
It sounded, maybe I'm wrong, but the last correspondence I read was Carl's comment stands at the, there was some size gravel that was too large. Eight inch, is that correct? It should be six inch. And Lee had mentioned that needs to take that up with Craig Bacon, is that correct?
Yes, I stand corrected. There's a third piece of correspondence, which is an email from Holgren, from Blair to Holgren dated January eighth. And this is where Holgren indicates that the subdivision regulations call for 18 inches of good, clean bank gravel, et cetera. That's, was sent, that was sent along with the Quinn's report of January eighth as well, is that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's it, that's it, sir. That's what I'm struggling with.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that one?
I do. So he started the road on phase two, is that him starting on the road on that, because he was supposed to start on that phase until everything was completed on the first one. Does the road, is that including the road from, or he can go ahead and start?
But what he cannot do is, he cannot...
Start any type of...
He can't sell any houses.
Like, can't even, before they're built, can't sell the property?
Right.
Can he rephrase that, can he build houses but not sell them?
Yeah, he can build them, but he can't sell them.
Okay. That's my question, because I thought he wasn't allowed to build on them yet, until it was completed.
Yeah. No, the covenant that that part is under basically simply says he won't sell.
So he can theoretically go and finish the whole project, if he could, all at once, but not be able to sell?
Yeah, you know, well, you know, yes and no. I think, I think we do also still have something in our subdivision regs about safe access for inspections. You know, in other words, if he starts building a house and it's, there's no gravel or anything else on the road, then the building inspector, electrical inspector are in danger, trying to get to it.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think there is something in there regarding...
We have Davis cruise through that, just to make sure.
Regs? Might not be a bad idea.
Between phase one and phase two, is it true that he can build a house? Maybe just read the regs or something like that, and make sure...
In other words, what does the covenant restrict him on?
In terms of any kind of development on phase two?
Yeah, I was under the impression that he couldn't even start phase two until phase one was complete.
No, he can, he can build all the roads and that sort of thing, he wants to.
Oh, and I was okay with the roads, but I didn't think, Norm, is that he couldn't start development of houses until everything was cleaned up on phase one. He could build the roads, but he couldn't do anything with, off of the roads, that's what I thought, but...
Yeah, I don't believe that's the case. I do know he cannot sell houses until they're released.
All right, good enough.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon?
No.
Okay, CMRPC invoice number 3779.
Denied.
What is that?
Is that the one where we were paying bags, just bags?
Yes, I believe.
It's the $8,000 one, I think, I mean, we get our reach to the CMRPC to understand what it was for, so I listed that out in this notes. I think the question is who is responsible to pay for it, whether it's out of the town's general funds, or whether it's out of the administrative budget for the planning board. I have to still research that, talk to the treasury and/or the accountant to find out if there was a line item for that or not. So I don't have an answer to that one yet.
Does anyone else here have a good recollection?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't.
I thought Margaret, Norm, had, we had agreed a percentage that we were going to pay and the town was gonna pay.
I thought that as well, but I swear to it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a conversation I remember having, but I don't...
I know we have an agreement for Dave. We're paying part of his, out of the administration, part of it is coming out of the general...
But I thought we were using CMRPC before Dave got hired in their capacity as a, as a planning resource, and we were gonna split some costs.
You know, I just...
That's what I remember. I just don't remember the number, I just remember Margaret saying that she'd go and get us some budget money. That's, that's all I can...
I'd like to get this guy paid, I mean, if he hasn't been paid yet.
Oh, it's CMRPC, it's the company.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, we should. But I just, I honestly, number one, I don't have a recollection, and the best that I can see is that somewhere... But I just, I, I honestly, number one, I don't have a recollection, and the best that I can see is that somewhere, if some was gonna come from the general fund, there's gotta be a line item somewhere.
I thought they put a line item in our budget last year.
Okay.
Dave, I guess that's a question to ask, um, our treasurer. I, I thought there was a line item last year, which we had never had in our budget before, put in for this. I can't, I just can't remember.
Yeah, I'll have to go to the treasury and/or the accountant to find out if they can give some, some help with this, 'cause I don't really know.
Okay. I swore, Margaret, to put a line item in for this.
Okay, next. New planning board secretary, interview panel.
I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the resignation of the previous.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Okay, you can't leave long.
Yeah.
How about a six percent increase?
You know, I, I'm, I'm starting to get some flickers because Dave and I discussed a little bit, this idea of the interview panel. When we hired you.
I was interviewed by you and Margaret.
Okay, that's what it was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, and that's what I was just kinda starting to kind of, sort of remember, but I wasn't absolutely sure.
Well, I'm not entirely sure that being, that the particular job should be through the town administrator. It's, yeah, personally, I think it's more, yeah.
And I, I remember a certain board member not happy about that, but not this one. The one that was sitting in the seat with the young lad at the other end. Not you.
This young lad's.
No, not you, it was Addison.
I'm okay with just it being a planning board issue because it's coming out in the funds of the planning board funds to pay.
Norm, I, I wouldn't, this is my opinion, I wouldn't mind if you and David interviewed that person.
Yeah, but anybody on other boards, it's not really their, I'd think that they would be overstepping their bounds.
Because you and David have to work with that individual, so that's my suggestion. The town administrator really has no.
Yeah.
I.
And it's paid out of our funds, so that's, that's just my opinion.
If I could, I think, oh, what I would be recommending is that it would be with the planning board, if, I, I think a couple of questions to consider. It would be with the planning board and/or staff. I don't believe the town administrators are, is needed for this purpose. I guess what you folks maybe wanna consider is whether you wanna do it as a collective board, an interview, or delegate some number of members. And if you do that, to think about a quorum issue. And if you want staff to be proud of that, then we'd be glad to help.
And, and on that half, one of the secretaries that came into the RDIC, we were hoping last night that she would put an email into us, and she did not, and that is the ConCon secretary. She did not.
Oh, she hasn't?
No, and the deadline was last night.
I, I.
And I am very aghast about it because that only leaves us one person, and I know the RDIC, I, I believe it's the one, is, the other girl is the one that also filed? For secretary.
I have one application in my email box. I think I would prefer keeping names off the table at this point to say it's not the, it's one person who submitted their resume about a month, about a couple of weeks ago when it first came out, which is not the person you're talking about now.
Okay.
I do believe that the planning board would have the jurisdiction to extend the process if it saw fit to do so for a reasonable amount of time. We did write the job detail to allow for that occurrence. To extend it for good reason, if you saw such.
We're talking about RDIC, not the planning board.
Planning board.
Plan board.
Planning board, but I mean, the RDIC also.
That's a different word, Dick, let's not talk about that word.
But last night, we hired a secretary.
Oh.
And it was not the one from ConCon. It was a different one. But, and, and I was hoping that she was gonna go home last night and file. And she did not. I, I agree, we should extend and, and see if she wants to, because I, I feel that she has the, the ability to handle this.
She did, um, apply first though, right? Or kinda through hearsay type, 'cause I don't think that, the, the, it wasn't posted yet, but I thought that was just kinda through, like, internal.
I think we just make this easy.
It was posted. We, we asked for it to be put onto the town's website under the job announcement page. We had individual notices that were distributed to the various town departments and town hall to be posted in their respective places of business, and we had one on the wall in the planning board.
Okay.
In, in the community hall annex building, so it was circulated, it was publicized.
But I'm, I was talking about prior before it was all published, I thought it was just kinda hearsay through.
Yeah.
Different. We need a motion, I'd, I'd like to extend this to the end of the month. At least give January some time, more time to bring somebody in.
I would say it was not posted in the town hall. It was, it was on the town website, but it was not in the town hall. I was talking to Anita today.
It was just in the annex?
It wasn't posted, but it was distributed.
Okay.
Okay. Really, no, my wife went up to get the cultural council mail, and the notice was in the cultural.
It's a cultural, I need to see it.
I'm just, well, I guess I'll make a motion to extend the deadline.
He's talk, we're talking about something completely different. Am I correct?
No.
Talking about RDIC.
No, what Dick is talking about is that there was a candidate who may be interested in being the planning board secretary of one of the two folks who applied for the RDIC position. There was one who might be interested in this, but that person apparently did not fully know about this opportunity because of whatever reason. I, I'm.
Okay.
That's what.
And I'm just making a motion. Is it, I guess I should ask, have we closed our?
It was last night.
It closed last night.
All right, well, then I'm, I guess I'm making a motion to extend it to the end of the month.
And I would second that.
And that would be part of me, just for internal candidates only.
Yes.
Because that's how it was originally.
Yes, for internal candidates.
Then if anybody wants to pass the word on to folks who might be interested for an internal position, work for the town hall or the town now, then feel free to do that.
And I would like.
ConCon's next meeting.
Yeah.
I would like to have Laurie weigh in on this because that necessarily keeps her.
Does not keep me. My resignation, I am sorry, it is the fifteenth. I, I, I wish I would've made it two weeks. This is really hard. My apologies, but I, I cannot extend my tenure.
So.
I'll figure it out.
So, I think, I think extending to the end of the month is.
It's too long. Okay, the fifteenth. I, I had to take a friendly emotion to the fifteenth, which is only two weeks, but.
Would you like to go one week?
I was gonna say, let, let's, people, somebody here knows about these people.
Yeah.
Okay.
He said know about one.
Extend it just enough so that you, 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 whoever it is, you contact that person and say, hey, it's open.
It's, uh.
Drive, cut.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
All right. So, I'll go to the fifteenth. I'll make my, which is seven days from today.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. It would be five more days. That's, that's time.
I'd, I'd say, yeah, by this week, by the end of this week. I mean, it's not like we have to reach out. I have.
I'm sticking with seven days.
Personal information of this person.
I'm sticking with the fifteenth.
When Laurie's done, that's when I'm, say, closing, so.
Um, move on? I can't wait now.
That was a motion.
A motion, did you?
I seconded the first motion.
You're gonna second?
I will second all amendments.
Okay, so which one are we going with?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, fifteenth.
And can I just get a sense of how the board would like to carry this out? Would you like to do an interview panel involving the whole board?
No.
No.
Portion of the board?
I think, if I may, the chairman and you.
Would you like one other member?
I trust.
Okay.
And we will go on.
I'm, I'm happy with that.
You could do, I mean.
It was me and the town administrator, and look what we did last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm trusting the, Dave and, and Norm to come up with a good.
If, if something does come up where you need another person, you guys know I only live right down the street.
Yeah. I would certainly jump in if you need me.
Okay.
What do we got to vote on?
Okay, so, well, we need a vote on the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
In favor?
Aye.
voted.
All right.
What's this next one? That's the one I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, thousand dollars, that we're going back to, outstanding. Thanks, Norm. I'll make a motion, it'll be thousand dollars, and that they take the fifteen thousand dollar fund away from the guy over there in the fire department that's looking at the annex and give it to us.
Well, don't get me started.
Uh, well, obviously, budget process is getting underway or is underway, or.
You haven't got an official notice, have you, yet, from Mr. Reed?
He's leaving.
Yeah, he's only got, what?
A week.
Yeah, another week.
Fifteenth. Fourteenth, he's outta here, less than a week.
Yeah.
He's gone. Bob?
Well, there may be some overlap, he said.
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, especially when I told him last night, you know, especially when the new person comes in and then turns around and walks out.
It's Thursday.
Twenty-three or twenty-four?
What type of budget process are we looking at?
Right, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. Basically, this will be my first budget season in this town, and I was just, was wondering how it was done previously, whether or not there are existing documents or existing line items to look at to compare last year to this year, and just general guidance on the process, inner assistance in developing it.
There's only one thing, isn't it, that we asked the town for, and that's the central mass regional planning, uh.
And stipends.
Stipend, or dues, or whatever.
No, 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 no.
No?
No.
Should be raised, I'm worried.
I'm trying to get the stipends in there.
Yeah. Okay, the CMRPC thing is, yeah, that's pretty much taken over by town now. I don't think, we're not even paying it, are we, or?
That went to select board.
DOT thing?
No, no, this is an abatement, like, type of thing. All towns that are part of the central mass.
Are dues.
Are dues that they pay.
We happened to pass about pay the CMRPC dues. I'm pretty sure. I don't know if we still are.
No, I know that.
Here's another thing, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to get last year's budget.
Yeah.
It's spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Just look in the budget.
Yeah, you know. Um, the only thing to me, you know, you know, obviously, they, they go round and round on budgets, you know, they ask everybody submit a budget, submit a five percent reduction budget, you know, submit a seventy-five percent reduction budget.
With all this solar coming in now?
And, and that sort of thing.
Well, we really don't have a massive, I mean, we don't have twelve employees.
No, so ours is really pretty simple. There, there's that stipends, uh, and, um, there's that CMRPC thing, however that is done, but.
We got a new line item, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's sitting over there.
Sitting over there.
Ten percent reduction, right off the top.
No.
No.
I, and this is, this is just a personal thought on my part, I would like to see a larger portion of his pay come out of the general budget. And less out of our administrative.
Could you just?
Not.
Look this way and say that again?
I'd like to see a larger portion of his pay come from the general fund. And less from our administrative account. Only because, uh, you know, and right now, I haven't looked at it lately, but I think our administrative account is in pretty good shape. Uh, but it's not.
It can't sustain planning for years on end.
It's not guaranteed.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, if things keep going the way they are now, we, we'd actually be fine and dandy. But by the same token, if all of a sudden things take a drop, then, hey, we ran into this once before.
Better believe it, and it hurt.
Yeah, we had to let him go.
Yeah, so.
Reduce hours with him.
Uh, when it comes time for us to submit, what, what I think I'd wanna do is take a look at, you know, here's what we're contributing, and, uh, here's what, what the town came up with, and I'd like to, uh, jack the crest, jack up the request from the town.
Oh, I agree, no.
And drop hours. Oh, not a bunch. You know, take, take it in bits and pieces.
Yeah.
And see what they say.
Won't hurt. Gotta try. And like I say, the way I look at it, we're gonna get a little bit more. Not only that, isn't it supposed to be, I don't know, it's this year or next year, we have a couple of large debt items that are gonna be paid off.
It's either, yeah, it's either twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Yeah.
But, but.
So anyways.
Who knows?
Let's, let's be ready.
Okay, last thing, implementation of viewpoint online permitting. Dave, that's all yours.
Yeah, I just put that, just to give the board an update, that the viewpoint online permitting is moving ahead. We will be starting implementation with the building inspectional services first, and then fire, and then work our way along. Um, so it's, it's happening, and it will be implemented, and we're working towards a successful completion.
Good. But just take your time, 'cause I don't want you to get so involved in it that you forget about us.
Well, that's, that's something that we were even, you know, talking a little bit about, but just, from the way I see it, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Which, if, if they're stealing too much of him, I'll complain.
Yeah, yeah. By all means.
So.
Well, I'm glad. I'm, you know, it's something that we needed to get implemented, and.
Second set of software we bought, 'cause we bought software to do this about ten years ago, and it never got implemented. We even bought, we even bought little handhelds that were gonna.
Even goes on for the, you know, the open space from ConCon that was ten years ago that we worked so hard on that never went anywhere, and that was what, twelve thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we spent a lot of time on that, and it got lost somehow.
Well, is there a, is there an open, is there an old business section that I can ask some questions on?
Yeah, right here, just go right ahead. New business, not reasonably intense.
This, what Mr. Williams mentioned about this plan to take over the old library, what's the status of that, and what's, I guess I just wanted, you know, there was fifteen thousand dollars pulled, is it a study, or is it an implementation policy?
It was supposed to be a study, I thought.
Yeah, it's, it's still just, it's still just study.
Okay.
It's what?
Study, that's all.
But, in my opinion.
It's a study that's gonna go to completion? Well, I hope not.
Okay.
To be all honest, and, and, you know, the rest of the board probably knows my feeling about this, very, I am.
Build a second freaking store.
I am so upset that they keep wanting to bring in other towns to cut down Rottland's thing. I said, get rid of everybody else and just keep Rottland, period. Uh, it's getting to the point, you know, what are we doing? We're turning around and trying to become a.
Commonwealth?
Not a Commonwealth.
County.
A county government. It's all, all of this is being pushed to put us into our county government, back to our county government. I'm sorry, but that's what it is.
Works in the Midwest.
I think we should have our own school system. We have so many kids in this town now. Build a school on the heights and.
Open a little red building up.
Get out and watch, you said.
There's so much going on, and, and that's one reason why I said last night at the RDIC to the administrator, we don't need administrator, we need a manager. Because I feel that it's over the heads of the select board, everything that's got to happen in here. But that's my opinion, Paul. No, no, you keep it on your side.
Well.
That's all I was curious about is.
And if anybody wants to see me, uh, become a jerk tomorrow night.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that. Uh, what, what time is that meeting?
I can't remember. It'll be offhand. It's, it's the, it's seven?
You're talking about the growth management steering committee? Never mind, sorry.
That's not tomorrow. Is it the growth management one?
Yeah, tomorrow. You're not talking about that one?
I can't go then.
Never, never mind.
He's talking about the, down.
You are absolutely right. I can't go tomorrow night.
You're not part of growth management, Joe, it's just me and Jeff.
No.
You are too?
Yes. I was on the steering committee, then I had my knee done. But so be. Um, Holden Light Department is where the hearing is gonna be held on Shoesbury and Doyle Street with the Roundabout.
Oh, the Roundabout.
And that's where I wanna stand up and say, you dumb bunch of jerks.
You televised, so they're.
I could care less. They know me as a jerk, and I'm telling everybody else down there, because twenty years ago, I put two ads in the Holden Landmark, start now, because it takes twenty years from the time you start with a road to get your first car on it. And these stupid jerks down here didn't want a bypass put in. And a bypass would eliminate the use of having all that other work, traffic work done on, on Shoesbury Street and Doyle. all that other work, traffic work done on, on Shoesbury Street and Doyle.
They would have bypassed it and you couldn't brain train around.
No, originally, it sat on the, in the books down there, Central Mass Regional, it was nineteen seventy-six, they had one, I think, in sixty-four down there, but it took off from Holden Trap Rock, went right across the road, and out through the woods, all the way up to Mannix Street to one forty, and it was taking all the traffic from this end, Holden can come up to it, you know, it's supposedly, the other side of Sunny Side, it was Malden Street, was supposed to go out and connect too, never did, because of all the power down there and Holden, the, you know, the Harringtons, Zottlys, Benson's, and whoever else was on the board of selectmen at the time, did not want it, they, they fixed the road, but they really stuffed it to the people, the bunch of jerks, because of what are they, small two lane road into a bigger two lane road, it was supposed to have had a turning lane in the middle, never did, but they gave it to the people, oh, we got this beautiful road, nah, they got it stuffed.
Now, one twenty-two A is a bypass road around everybody at, at, at the mobile station, and then up at Honey Farms.
I'd go directly up to the one forty, take, if I have to go through, I'd just keep going up to one forty and come back down towards Laurel, down by the reservoir, go that way.
Yeah, well, anyways, that's my two cents.
I have an announcement too, I'm going to be gone the thirteenth of March, and I'll be missing one meeting, I'll be back on the twenty-ninth, but I'll be, I'll be here for the, you know, if you don't get back, I'll be here, we're flying out the thirteen.
Another thing, and I think Dave is trying to get on top of this, of, and I think he's the only one who'll be able to do it, keeping track of when people are and are not going to be here because of all these public hearings and that sort of thing, your dates are.
I'm leaving February sixth, and I'll be back, hopefully, what was it, the twelfth?
The twelfth.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Or twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
And I will not be here for the twenty-sixth of March.
Anybody else?
But you could call in, I mean, I'll be in Florida, but you could call me.
You could do that for one meeting, I believe.
Pardon me?
You can only use the Mullins rule for one meeting, I believe.
No.
No.
No, you can call in, as long, we passed a bu, a rule that as long as you call in, it's considered attendance, but you, we have to take roll call votes.
Roll call vote.
When we're doing it.
I, I think.
If I can be able to do that.
I think what you're thinking about is.
He won't, no, I don't blame him.
If, you can, you can miss one meeting, but you have to review minutes or transcript.
Yeah. That's the one I'm thinking of, yes.
Yeah.
Now, when you said you were missing.
Yeah, that's different.
March thirteenth, did you mean the twelfth, or was we in the meeting on the twelfth?
I'll be here on the twelfth.
Oh.
We're flying out on the thirteenth.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was telling Dick I would be there for the twelfth, in case he didn't get back in time.
If there's going to be a snowstorm, we'll try to leave a, a day early, drive home.
It's going to get wicked cold Friday.
But I will be, you know, I'll be there to cover for you if you don't make it, so.
Okay.
Okay, Dave, if anything else?
I'm good.
Motion adjourned.
Second adjourn.